Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. It is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, and this is not only our regularly scheduled city council meeting, but it is our last one of 2023. It's 6:00 PM. If you're watching online or you're here in person, thank you very much for being part of our city council meeting tonight. We will go ahead and start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please take a little call?
Barbara Bynum.
Here.
Jay David Reed.
Here.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Douglas Bell.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that we have no changes to the agenda per se, but we do have an additional youth counselor for consideration tonight. So when we get to that part, we'll make sure to get that name in. The first thing on our, or the next thing I should say on our agenda tonight is the oath of office for City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Dowsey.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado.
The State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of City Attorney.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of City Attorney.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dowsey, you have always been part of the team, serving previously as our Assistant City Attorney, but welcome now to the head table of the team as our City Attorney.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next on our agenda tonight, item six, is our youth city council appointments. And this is council's consideration of the applicants, Hunter Barton, Sidney Bell, Maggie Cusar, Shaila Worthen, Jordan Simo, Robin Catell, and Rain Ice, I want to pronounce it right, Acasio. And one more additional candidate, which is, or who is.
Grayson Vidmar.
Grayson Vidmar, okay. And this is for positions on the 2023-2024 Montrose Youth City Council. And our youth city council coordinator is Brusinda Ortega, so I'll turn it over to you to tell us a little bit about how we're going to do this tonight.
Thank you, council. So we did receive eight applications for the youth city council term 2023-2024. Three of them unfortunately couldn't be here. They had scheduling conflicts. But they did submit a video that I will be presenting to you after we do the interviews for the candidates that are here today. So how it's going to work, we will actually have all the candidates come up to the table. So if you guys wanted to come up now. They will each take turns coming up to the podium. They will state their name, their grade, their school. They will pick out a question from this cup. They will read off the question and then they will provide an answer to you. And I think we have an order already, so I think I'll call up Sidney Bell. She'll be the first one to come up.
And before she draws a question, she's going to tell us a little bit about herself, right? That's what you said. Good evening, Sidney.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sidney Bell, and I'm in 10th grade at the Montrose High School. And I was in youth city council last year as well. My question is, where do you think you could help the youth city council make connections and build relationships in the community? I think that we could coordinate a new event to get all of our youth together and just get everybody together and talking to each other and just coordinate with the youth in the community to think, to have more ideas of what we can add to our community and what we could better and what we could fix and help in the city and just around Montrose overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, who's next? You have one more? Okay. Shaila. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Shaila Worthen. I am also in 10th grade at the Montrose High School. Can you tell us a time when you had a miscommunication with a peer and how you managed that? Well, in high school, there are a lot of miscommunications. Very frequently, they do happen. Oftentimes, I see miscommunications between myself and others in my eighth world class, probably the most often. And the best way to work through that for me, I think, is just take a moment to slow everything down and really reword how I'm speaking to my peers in a way that will better help us communicate and really just talk to one another a little more in depth so that we can figure out the problem between us and resolve it. That's all.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Grayson Vidmar. This is my first application to youth city council. I'm a ninth reader at Montrose High School currently. My question is, what ideas do you have to help youth city council represent all youth in the Montrose community? I think there are a lot of really great ways to go about making sure everybody in our community feels represented. I think that one of the best ways is talking to my fellow youth face to face in school settings, but really just in any relaxed interpersonal setting so that they feel comfortable sharing and so that I can feel comfortable taking their thoughts in a more natural way. And I think that these opinions and ideas that my fellow youth may have could better be represented by talking to my youth city council and by, you know, after that, talking to the city council more broadly about what solutions we could come up with to put those ideas and opinions into action. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Grayson.
Hi, Maggie. Hi, hello. I'm Maggie Cusar, and I'm a sophomore at Montrose High School. And this will be my second year on submitting an application for city council. My question is, what is one of your greatest achievements? And tell us how you achieved this goal. I think my greatest achievement is getting all A's throughout my freshman year and hopefully my sophomore year of high school. And I've achieved this goal by just having a good work ethic and just staying very organized. So it's a big part of how I maintain my grades.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Hunter. I am a senior at Montrose High School. This will also be my second year applying. Let's see here. Give us an example of an activity or opportunity for youth you'd like to see, or youth city council organize. So in my application, I also answered this question. I think it'd be very cool to have a community-wide service project followed by a barbecue of sorts. That way, we can experience serving each other as a community. And then we can also have some more relaxed, more fun time together. This would really help us grow because we'd be able to grow closer and help ourselves out. And yeah, thank you for your time, council.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those of you who are here. Are we going to see some videos from the?
Yes, now I will be presenting the three other candidates.
Fantastic.
Hello, my name is Raini Cosiano, and I'm a sophomore at the Montrose High School. A little about me is I am involved with a lot of clubs and organizations throughout the school. Some of my favorites are band, FBLA, and student council. I'm also involved with dance, and it's unfortunately the reason why I can't be with you guys today. I did have a conflict. But thank you so much for letting me submit this video instead. The question I will be answering today is, what is one of your greatest achievements? And tell us how you achieve this goal. I think one of my greatest achievements is being elected as sophomore class president. I would for sure be lying if I said I did it all by myself. I couldn't have done it without my friends and family. My family was always there for me, and they always supported me, and I could always go to them if I had any questions. My friends also supported me in the same way, and they also promoted me throughout the school. During my campaign, I learned that I liked talking to people. Before my campaign, I was very scared to go up and talk to people. It was, it just wasn't my forte. I was also a freshman, so I was just scared of upperclassmen in general. But after my campaign, I definitely became more comfortable with going up to people and asking them for favors, especially in student council. Thank you guys again so much for watching my video and letting me submit this. I hope you guys have a great day. Bye. Hello, my name is Raini. Sorry, I might have to.
I think I might be presenting from the beginning. Figure it out. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Jordan Simo. I am a sophomore at Montrose High School, and I'll be answering.
Uh-oh, we lost the sound.
It's still connected.
Hello, my name is Raini Cosiano. I'm a sophomore.
In the show. Encouraging.
I do apologize.
Hey, no worries. Technology is tricky. I think we completely understand why there was a conflict for these students and super happy they put together videos. We'll figure it out. We'll make it work. Meanwhile, you guys can all think, I'm glad I came, or should I put a video? Would it be weirder if they watched the first three minutes, thirty seconds of my video eight times? Or if I was in person?
Let's try this one more time.
Hi, my name is Jordan Simo. I am a sophomore at Montrose High School, and I'll be answering the interview question, what is your biggest accomplishment and how did you accomplish it? My biggest accomplishment is probably getting on my Nationals club team, more so going out for it. It just was a lot for me mentally and physically. I recently got cut from my school team, and when I've been playing volleyball for half of my life, it just kind of took a lot out of me. It kind of knocked me down a few pegs, and it was really hard for me to believe in myself and to still follow what I love. But I knew I was enough, and I knew that I was good. So I decided to practice for over a month, almost every day, in the gym with my dad, working out, all of that, and to still go out for a club team, the Nationals won injunction, to drive the hour and a half, not the hour and a half, but the hour and fifteen minutes there and back. And to go out for that, it took, for like, for me to achieve that, it took a lot of perseverance on my part. Took a lot of me believing in myself and not giving up and hard work just to know that I can do this and that even though someone told me no, it doesn't mean I shouldn't do what I love. So getting on that team was probably my biggest accomplishment. One thing about me is I'm in four clubs right now, hopefully five. I'm an officer in one, applying for another officer in a different club. I'm an officer in Astra. I am in FBLA, Rotary Interact, and FCA. I love to do clubs outside of school and community service. I love my family, and I put a lot of work and effort into getting good grades at school. Thank you.
This will be the third candidate.
Hi, my name is Robin, and I'm in 10th grade, and I go to MHS. My question was, give me examples of a time when you worked with someone whose opinion differed from yours. So I've had a couple experiences with this. Usually, I try to listen to like, what the other person has to say, and I really don't like just having one opinion like set on it. I love listening to what other people have to say and coming to an agreement or even an agree to disagree. And that's usually what happens. I like to hear their argument, and I usually tell them my own. I try to keep it as civil as possible. I don't like getting into, you know, fights and stuff, so. Yeah, I'm really excited to be a part of this. I thank you for the opportunity.
Great.
This will be all the applicants.
Thank you very much. Do any council members want to say anything before I close out? Thank them.
It's always exciting every year to see this crop of kids that are really engaged in our community and are willing to take and give up their time and their efforts to learn more about what makes government work. And I just salute all of you, and I'm really excited to see you all apply. And I look forward to us working together throughout the year.
Any other comments before we do a motion? Okay, Mr. Uliber. Sure.
Okay, anybody can answer this question?
Oh, you want to ask them a question?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm not sure. You know, they were told they would only have to answer one question. I don't know if you can do that. Put them on the spot.
How about a volunteer? Do we have a volunteer to answer a question? No.
From the freshmen. Could go easy on him, Mr. Uliber.
I promise. What do you feel are the duties and responsibility of duty of council?
Mr. Uliber, I, as a freshman, as I said, I'm a little bit inexperienced. But from what I can tell, it sounds like the duties of a youth city council person are to help to advise the city council in regard to the interests of the youth in our community and what they might be, you know, interested in, what their opinions are, and to help provide an interface between the city council and the youth of the community.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council before we entertain a motion? Okay. Would someone like, we are actually doing a motion tonight to appoint them, so.
I would make a motion that we appoint all of our applicants to our youth city council.
Second. Fantastic. Please vote. Sometimes we wait till our next city council meeting when we interview folks, like for the planning commission, we'll interview them, and then we can talk about it. We did not want to make you all sit around all Christmas going, I cannot get on youth city council. So I am so proud tonight to say that that has passed unanimously. We are so excited that you guys are interested in learning more about your community, that you stepped up to be on youth city council. I know that you have so many opportunities and so many things that you guys are doing and could be doing. And so saying that this is going to make the cut for your time and your attention and also your family. Because we know unless you are driving, and even once you are, this is also a commitment by your family to support you being here and to make sure you get to meetings and that your schedule allows you to participate. So to all the parents who are here tonight, thank you so much. You should be so proud of your young adults here who came before us tonight and spoke so well and articulately. So thank you, guys. We're really excited. You are always welcome to stick around and watch any or all of the rest of our youth city council meeting, or you can leave right now, and it won't be rude. Because we know you have a lot of things on your plate, okay? Thank you, guys. Look forward to working with you guys. So now you can get up.
Dismissed.
Dismissed. Okay. Weren't they great? They were fantastic. I'm so excited. Okay, so next on our agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So everything that we're going to vote on tonight, there will be public comment opportunities for those particular items. But right now, this part of our agenda is set aside. If you have something to say to city council, we do set aside this portion of the meeting. Sometimes there's people here for this part and sometimes not. So before I read all the legal language, is anyone here for public comment? You could raise your hand and let me know. And since I don't see anyone, I am going to skip reading the legal language. Those of you who are in the audience, if you wish to comment on one of the other items tonight, I will ask for public comment. Please jump up right away, raise your hand. If I missed seeing you, wave it even higher. I really want to make sure that if you're here to comment, you get that opportunity. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda tonight is item eight, approval of minutes. And this is council consideration of the minutes of November 13th, 2023 special city council meeting and the November 14th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Is there, does anyone see any changes that need to be made? Any corrections? Seeing none, we entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 special city council meeting and the November 14th, 2023 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have our first and a second. Please vote. And those minutes pass unanimously. Moving us on to the first ordinance reading of the evening. This is item nine on our agenda. It's ordinance 2653. This is a first reading. Every ordinance, it requires us to read and vote twice. So we'll have a second reading and a second vote on this in January. But for the first reading, I am actually going to turn it over to you and recuse myself because this happens to affect my neighborhood. And I just want to make sure that there's no conflict or anything like that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll pause for a moment.
Is he holding slow? I'm watching.
She has a hammer, and she will hit you.
As the mayor said, this is city council consideration of ordinance 2653 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, creating the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District. And for presentation, I'll turn that over to our newly sworn in city attorney, Mr. Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Reed. Members of council, before you is an ordinance to create the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District. I'll refer to it as the SID from here on, as that is quite a mouthful. Well, this is the first reading of the ordinance. There's been much discussion of this in the past, so I'll keep this presentation brief. If any members of the public would like a full recap, this was discussed at length at the November 6th work session and a resolution of intent to create this SID passed on November 14th council meeting. However, this is the ordinance that will actually create the SID. As we have discussed, the Otter Pond Dam, which is owned by the Otter Pond HOA, has failed. And in order to fix the dam, the city's utilities will need to be relocated. The HOA approached the city for assistance in this matter. They have circulated a petition, which was signed by a vast majority of the 85 lots within the HOA. This SID will defray the cost of the utility relocation to those 85 lots within the HOA, as the code allows. This occurs by the city paying the contractors directly, then at a later date, assessing the total cost among the HOA. This is going to come before council. We believe it's going to be likely sometime in the summer. And then residents of the HOA will have the option to either pay their lump sum share right away or have this paid overtime over the next 20 years with an interest rate of 4% accruing every year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dowsey, could you explain the mechanism that the repayment goes?
I.
How do they repay it?
Oh, how they repay it? They'll repay it to the city. If they opt for the 20-year, as opposed to paying the upfront cost, there will be a lien on the property for that amount.
And so it's assessed through their property tax?
Correct.
That we can then get remitted through from the county?
That is correct as well.
Being careful to point out that we have no city property tax.
Very careful.
Also correct.
Any further discussion from council? I'll open this up to public comment. Does anyone from the public care to comment on this agenda item? Seeing no public comment, I would accept a motion.
I move to pass ordinance 2653 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. The ordinance passes on first reading with one abstention.
Until he wants to make public comment.
You know, if all of our public comment came from a one-year-old, that'd be fun. Okay, item number 10, approval of street closures. Council consideration of the closure of the 500 block of Main Street and Uncompadre Avenue from Centennial Plaza to North First Street from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the Habitat for Humanity Rock the Block Event on Saturday, June 22nd, 2024. And Special Events Manager John Sullivan will tell us a little more about this.
And John is not here, so I'm happy to present this item.
I was waiting for him to like, come in on Zoom.
To my knowledge, he's not joining by Zoom, but I'm happy to share information about this. Council, you heard about this application at the last work session. Our city code requires that whenever a street is closed for a special event and that closure exceeds 10 hours, that you review it before it's approved. You heard some information from John last time, and I can't remember if the Director of Habitat, Amanda Gerhart, spoke about it or not, but she's here tonight if you have any questions about the event. The proposal is to close the 500 block of Main Street and Uncompagre from North First Street to Centennial Plaza for the Rock the Block Event, which is a fundraiser for Habitat for Humanity. This would occur on June 22nd, 2024. So well in advance, and we're very appreciative of Habitat coming to the city and to you to ask for this closure well in advance. The application lists 6:30 AM as the event setup time and 5:00 PM for the event end time. There's information in your packet as well about the proposed liquor license, which would be the liquor permit, which would be, excuse me, special event permit from Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. They'd apply for that separately. And this is a very excellent event for the downtown, and John was supportive of the components of the application.
Thank you. And I think an important piece we heard about when we talked about it at work session was that Habitat had done some significant outreach to businesses to make sure that they were supportive, because we know it impacts our Main Street businesses when we close down the street, that they were supportive and aware of the event. And I think that was, I think, really council's main concern when we talked about closing Main Street for a whole day, and that's been addressed. Okay. Any other questions from council for our staff or for our Habitat director? Okay, then I would accept public comment for this item. Like I said, for everything we vote on, we accept public comment. So would anyone like to comment about this street closure? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion from a fellow counselor.
I make a motion to approve the closure of the 500 block of Main Street and Uncompagre Avenue from Centennial Plaza to North First Street from 6:00 AM until 6:00 PM for the Habitat for Humanity Rock the Block Event on June 22nd, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have our first and a second, so please vote. And that passes unanimously. So we look forward to that event happening next summer. Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is item 11, Resolution 2023-27. And this is council consideration of a resolution authorizing a mail ballot election for the 2024 municipal election on April 2nd, 2024. And we have. And we have our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo, here. She coordinates all of our elections, and she's here to give us an update on this process. And it won't be the last one we get between now and April.
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor Bynum. Actually, the resolution, as you stated, authorizes a mail ballot election for our municipal election on April 2nd, 2024. We discussed this at the November 13th work session, and there were a few things that were still tentative in nature. But I have been in contact with the Montrose County Elections Office, and the final version of our election plan with all of those, with all those things solidified is in the meeting packet. But the most important thing that was confirmed is that our deadline to certify the ballot content is February 6th. So we are planning to have a candidate information session and draw names for ballot position before the city council meeting on that day. Our candidate information, we'll start recruiting candidates almost immediately. Our candidate packet will be available either on our website or people can pick one up at City Hall on or before Monday, December 11. Candidates can circulate petitions beginning January 2nd and until January 22nd. Candidates must be 18 years of old, 18 years of age, registered voters, and they have to live in the city limits and the seat they are running for, if they're running for a specific seat, for up to 12 months before the date of the election. To be a candidate, the candidate needs to collect 25 signatures from registered voters anywhere in the city. They don't have to be for the particular seat sought. And it's important to note also that each person who signs a petition can only sign for one candidate for each council seat. We will only count one. And anyone who has questions on the election process, questions on being a candidate, they are welcome to contact the city clerk's office either by email or phone or stop in and see us. We're happy to help.
Thank you very much. And a lot of that information is also online. If they want to just look at it before they call with a question, the map of the districts, where they would need to live, and those dates. Everything is under the city clerk's elections section of our website.
Absolutely. We have an elections webpage, and some of it's been updated already. Once we have this resolution adopted, we'll make the final updates and put the candidate packet out there.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any questions from council about this resolution? Anyone, the public wish to make comment before we vote on this resolution? I don't see anyone, so would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2023-27 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Please vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you. That allows us to move on to the next item, which is number 12 on our agenda tonight. And this is ordinance 2651. This is the second reading, so we've done this once, and the second reading then makes it final. And this is council consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2599, which appropriated funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the city of Montrose during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023. Set expenditures of the city of Montrose over and above those anticipated at the time of adoption of the original budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, which is all to say we are approving the supplemental budget for the current year. And I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Shani Wittenberg, to say a little bit more.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Yes, this is the second reading of this ordinance. It has not changed. And as a refresher from the work session and then from first reading, these are items that have been approved by you all throughout the year. This is just the formal act of amending the ordinance to reflect those expenditures. And I'm kind of conservative, so some of them might be high. That doesn't mean we're going to spend that much. We're just going to spend what we've been approved to spend. But you never know what happens between October and December. So that's, that being said, nothing has changed. Same conversation we would have had two weeks ago and at the work session. And I'll entertain any questions that maybe have come up since then.
Thank you. Council, any questions for our Finance Director? Okay. Then this is a public comment. Any public comment on our second reading? I don't see any, so we could have a motion, please.
I move to approve, to adopt ordinance 2651 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously. So next on our agenda is item 13, ordinance 2652 on second reading. And this is council consideration of an ordinance updating, and bear with me here, updating Title I, Chapter 14 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose, amending Title I, Chapter 14, Section 2, 1-14-2, regarding rules of procedure, amending Title I, Chapter 14, Section 4, 1-14-4, regarding sentencing, amending Title I, Chapter 14, Section 5, 1-14-5, regarding enforcement of fines, and repealing and replacing other code provisions to standardize cross-references in the official code of the city of Montrose regarding sentencing. And I am so happy to turn this over to Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro, who's great at this stuff. It's a lot of titles and codes, but...
It is only a lawyer could write that, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm here on a second reading on ordinance 2652. It's a proposal to update some of our municipal court rules, particularly as to procedure and sentencing. This proposal appears on pages 38 through 42 of tonight's session packet. This was discussed at a recorded work session held on November 6th with joint presentation, actually, in this one with the municipal court, as well as the legal department. It was approved after first reading in regular session on November 14th. There have been no changes made to the proposal since those respective presentations at recorded sessions. The main gist and main pieces of this is it takes part of the code, the first sentence in the sentencing provision, 1-144D, and moves the concepts addressed to another section, court procedure, where arguably they more properly belong. And it unpacks those four separate state law statutory cross-references regarding plea discussions and plea agreements. The other material main change to this one is the enforcement of fines section. It does modify the procedures there for consistency with state law and how state law exists now. This proposal was a product of joint discussions with the court and with the legal department. It was discussed and refined in three separate meetings with Judge Maxwell and her staff. The municipal court judge is in support of these proposed changes. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. And I really want to emphasize that last point you said, which is these changes were made in coordination with our municipal judge, Erin Maxwell, who is in support of these changes, right? That's what I thought I heard you say. Yeah, and I thought she was here. Okay. Any council questions or comments on these changes? Okay. Any public comment on these changes to these pieces of our municipal code? Okay, I don't see any, so would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2652 on second reading as presented. Second.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The last action item on our agenda tonight is item 14, the National Register of Historic Places nomination for the Knights of Pithias Building. And this is council consideration of a recommendation for approval of a National Register of Historic Places nomination for the Knights of Pithias Building located at 33 South Cascade Avenue in Montrose. And I'll turn this over to our planner, William Reese, who does such a great job with these historic buildings.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. The owners of the Knights of Pithias Building located at 33 South Cascade Avenue are seeking to add the building to the National Register of Historic Places. Since this is not something that happens very often, I will start by briefly explaining the process of adding a building to the National Register. Anyone can begin the process of adding a property to the register, which is administered by the U.S. Department of the Interior, specifically the National Park Service. As a first step, any nomination is submitted to the state's Historic Preservation Office or SHIPPO, which every state has one. SHIPPO sends each nomination to the state's Historic Review Board, which makes a recommendation on whether or not SHIPPO should send the application to the keeper of the National Register. Officially, only a state Historic Preservation Office can submit an application for federal designation, and the National Park Service ultimately determines whether a property is worthy of federal recognition as a historic property. And so in Colorado, whenever the state receives an application that falls within the boundaries of a certified local government, which the city of Montrose is, that CLG is expected to weigh in on the potential nomination. Since the Knights of Pithias Building is in city limits, History Colorado notified us that the process was underway, and we are expected to comment on this nomination prior to the Colorado Historic Preservation Review Board meeting, which will be held on January 19th, 2024. The application that has been prepared is included in tonight's packet. Tim Stroh with Springboard Studio LLC is here tonight representing the application, and he was instrumental in the application's preparation. The federal register does have a very similar review criteria to the city's, and the nomination suggests that the building is eligible under Criterion A and C, which indicates the building is both associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, and the property embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or represents the work of a master, or possesses high artistic values, or represents a significant and distinguishable entity whose components lack individual distinction. The building is associated with the history of fraternal lodges in Montrose, having been erected as the second lodge hall for the Knights of Pithias in the city and having served as the home of the Knights of Pithias Lodge from 1909 to 1921. The lodge was the site of numerous gatherings, both internal and public, as well as a space available for rent to a fellow fraternal organization, the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, prior to their own lodge being built across the street. It's also associated with the pattern of partnering lodges with retail on the first floor, which has included stores important to the community over the years. The KP Building is also eligible under Criterion C as an excellent example of the simplified Renaissance revival style popular during the early 20th century. Features from the style are represented on the architect-designed building, projecting cornice with brackets, concrete belt and string course, two-story posters with concrete trim, and windows and doors with arched lintels. It is also significant as the work of a local master architect, John H. Antrimus, as well as local master contractors, White and Oki. Both as a team and separately, these professionals were responsible for many of the major early 20th century buildings in Montrose and in the region. Of course, these are the same conclusions that we came to during the application for local designation, and so city staff finds that they, of course, support a proposed state and national designation as well. We are presenting this to city councils for a vote on whether or not council agrees that the building meets the criteria for the National Register. Council can choose to recommend approval or denial. Either way, the application will move forward to the state's review board. Obviously, we hope that the board will follow your recommendation, but they are not obligated to. Whether you recommend approval or denial, that decision will come down to a vote by the board. I do have to tell you that you do technically have a third option. You can choose to not make a recommendation of any kind. However, that does reflect poorly on the city during the state's annual evaluation of CLGs and could potentially jeopardize our status as a CLG. So while you technically have that option, I strongly advise against doing that. And I would recommend that you vote for either approval or denial. The application will be considered during the Colorado Historic Preservation Review Board meeting on January 19th, which can be accessed by Zoom. Those meetings are public, so council or anyone from the public who is interested is certainly welcome to watch and take part. I do plan on attending myself. City staff does recommend that city council votes for a recommendation of approval of designation of the Knights of Pithias Building. If there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. And of course, Tim Stroh is here as well.
I, excuse me, I have one comment and one question. My first comment is that we did designate this on the local register on November 1st of this year, 2022, excuse me. And being that the criteria are very similar, I think it would be a little inconsistent on our part not to follow through with the recommendation as presented. Question I have is by, if they do, if they are voted on to the National Register, does that open up any kind of federal grant funds for them? Does it do anything in a financial way for the, for the structure?
Yes, so it does open up the possibility of the owners of the building to receive tax credits for preservation and rehabilitation construction.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or concerns for either Mr. Reese or our guest?
I'd just like to comment on the work that you've done on it. I think it was great, and I thought it was very interesting. Some of the uses that that building has been used for it over the years was quite interesting also. Thank you.
Thank you. But I would have to acknowledge that the bulk of the work, I think, was prepared by Tim Stroh and his team.
Well, it's good, interesting work. It's certainly a building that our community would love to be proud of, and I'm excited to see that it is no longer abandoned and looking forward to seeing it revitalized and recognized as the historic structure that it is for our community. So with that, I will entertain public comment on this item. Please come on forward. It feels like you might have additional thoughts to share with us tonight. Can you please introduce yourself for our official record?
I will. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff. Tim Stroh, I'm the principal architect of Springboard. I have a studio here in Montrose. And so mainly, that was awesome. Will did a great job. Hired.
No, he's not available.
No. So I really have nothing more to add. It's been, it's been quite a process, honestly, because one of the interesting parts about putting a building on the National Register is the time at which you put the nomination in, you take photos of the building at the current condition it is at that time that you turn in the nomination. So as you can imagine, we wanted to get the building back to a period of significance before they did the brick infill between the second and third story that was added later on in its life, back to what we felt was a stronger period of significance and a better look for the building. And so we actually had to take a big risk, and the contractor and the owner took a big risk of getting those window openings back the way they were originally before we could turn this nomination in. So that was a pretty large risk. But we, we just wanted to say thank you for the support that this, this community has always provided for the project. It's been really, really great. Thank you for the support, I think. Having that local nomination through the CLG process and your Historic Preservation Board was super helpful. So while we might have done the work for this, we didn't start from zero, and that was a really big help. So that work that you're doing locally is great. So with that, I'll just say thank you for the support and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, unless there's any additional comments, we could have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to recommend the inclusion of the Knights of Pithias Building on the National Register of Historic Places.
Second.
Thank you, please vote. That passes unanimously, which is great news. William, do you know after the state meets on them in January, how long, until they decide whether it makes the cut or not?
I do not know.
Do you?
I don't know if Tim Stroh knows.
I'll repeat it if you shout it out, because I have anyone listening.
So the question was, how long will it take? It typically takes about three months. The state review board, or the state and national review board both meet, they're the same people, but they have to, they have two different meetings. So when they make the recommendation to forward it to the keeper at the Park Service, if there's comments during that meeting, we have to, as preparers of the form, we may need to go back and make corrections based on that committee's comments. And so that could take a few weeks or a month. And then we give it back to the state. They send it to the Park Service. They have, I believe it's 45 days to make a determination. So I would say in best-case scenario, we will know in March. If that is, and then it automatically gets placed on the state, once that's completed.
Fantastic. Well, I know we look forward to hearing about it, and so make sure that council gets an update. Thank you. and so make sure that council gets an update. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on now to staff reports. Are there any items under staff reports? I know. You know, all the quiet tonight reminds me a little bit of once when those of us who were super talkative in high school decided to punk our history teacher, and we made a pact that no one was going to talk. And it took her not very long before, some of us were kicked out of class for not talking. That has never happened to me before or since. So you all are very quiet tonight. I kind of wonder if I'm being punked. Um, no one has anything from the staff. Okay. Council, now I'm going to think I'm really being punked if none of you have anything to say.
Well, actually, I, I would like to perhaps, um, restate a couple of comments that I made yesterday at our work session. First, first of all, Jim Scheiden, your entire department and crew, wonderful job for the ribbon cutting for the new, uh, new playground at Buckley Park. Great job, and thank you very much. And your hot dogs, I understand, were really good. I didn't partake. And as I mentioned yesterday, the, um, uh, I think that's the first playground opening I've been at right after a snowstorm, and it was really interesting to see the kids there in, playing in the snow, but they were utilizing the new equipment. I didn't, but they did. Secondly, I want to congratulate the entire city staff for, uh, the lights, uh, the Christmas lights parade, Parade of Lights, uh, from Saturday night. Uh, I know the entire city staff, Public Works, many other departments, and particularly the PD, uh, protecting our public safety. Thank you, Matt, to your entire department for everything that, that you guys did. I, I think everything came off pretty much without a hitch, and, uh, it was another wonderful parade. And as best I could tell, I think everybody really enjoyed it. And with that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to the entire staff, uh, the administration, and my fellow counselors. And, uh, we've accomplished a lot, I think, in 2023, and I'm really looking forward to hitting the ground running with you in 2024 to keep the momentum going. So thank you all. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Um, I'll add on and, and provide some more information about the 2023 Parade of Lights. There were 104 parade entries. I think that is a recent record for participation. It was truly community-wide celebration. And after careful consideration, the judges awarded the following top three, um, place finishes. In third place, M&amp;H Towing and Recovery. In second place, Western Slope Four Wheelers. And in first place, the float and entry put together by Grace Community Church. So congratulations to those folks, and really to all of the amazing entries. So much time and work and participation went into those floats to really make it a special event. I'll close out in a minute, but does anyone else have anything else?
Yeah, I just think this really points out what a great team we have in the, in the city. Working together through all the different departments to pull that off was great.
I'd just like to thank the city staff for, uh, the good work that they've done this year, especially with, uh, the IT department. We're, uh, being, uh, not very good at using computers. They've always been there to lend me a hand, and, uh, as well as the city clerk. Thank you. And all the other employees of the city, thank you also.
I'd like to just, uh, agree again with Mayor Protim that, that parade was wonderful. And the presence of our Montrose City Police Department, the extra hours and time and standing on that asphalt is really, really admirable. Um, and I'd just like to, uh, wish our entire city staff and all of the citizens of Montrose, uh, really joyous holiday season. And we just hope you all enjoy your turkeys and your presents and the lights, and really have a great time this holiday season, but please don't drink and drive.
Thank you. And I'll close out with a few additional. I won't reiterate the, the other comments, except point out a couple really cool projects. The landscaping of the roundabout on Woodgate looks fantastic. So thanks to our crew that did that and the public input on the sculpture in the center of that. Um, our fall leaf cleanup program has gone very well. And today is Monday, and our last day for leaf pickup is December 7th. So that would be Wednesday. So if you haven't moved your bags to the curb from your side yard or what have you, please get them out on the curb, because we'll cease picking up bags after the 7th. And we'll pivot instead to snow removal. And we've already had to do a little bit of that, but if you're curious to know more, we will, um, talk about our snow removal plan, but I can point you towards the website. It answers a lot of questions that people have once the snow starts falling. And so with that, I think I'll wish for a, a wet, rainy, snowy winter season so we can replenish our water supply. Everyone have a Happy New Year, and thanks for coming to council meeting tonight. Motion to adjourn? Thank you. We're adjourned.